Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, October 14th Regular City Council Meeting. I'll call it to order, and Dee Stiles Elliott, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
President.
Councilmember Delara.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
President.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
So for announcements tonight, we have a few. The first is coming up this weekend, Pullman Days of Service. Join the City of Pullman and WSU for Pullman Day of Service on Saturday, October 18th. Plenty of fun and family-friendly volunteer opportunities. You can visit pullman-wa.gov/daysofservice to sign up so we can make a meaningful difference together. There will be a staff open house on Thursday, October 23rd, so the community is invited to the City of Pullman Staff Open House. This is an opportunity for the community to meet with the different department leaders, and this is on Thursday, the 23rd, from 4:30 to 6:30 at Neil Public Library. Meet the people who run the City Pullman Departments, ask questions, and learn about the services that the city provides for the community. And then, since it's fall, we have leaf collection coming, so the 2025 City of Pullman Residential Leaf Collection schedule is here. Visit pullman-wa.gov/leaves to find out what dates in November leaves will be collected on your Pullman Hill. And then to Parks and Rec, mark your calendar for Spooky Splash on October 25th at the Pullman Aquatic and Fitness Center. Come grab a pumpkin from the floating pumpkin patch, do some spooky crafts, and watch It's a Great Pumpkin, Charlie Brown, on the big screen. Tickets are $7 for residents, $9 for non-residents, and you can register at pullman-wa.gov/spookysplash. There also will be Halloween Carnival, so put on costumes and bring your children to the Parks and Recreation Halloween Carnival on Friday, October 31st, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Pullman Recreation Center. This event is free and open to kids ages 3 through 10, and they're grownups. And then, coming up at the library, the Legal Women Voters on Pullman will be hosting a Pullman City Council Candidate Forum on Thursday, October 16th, 5:30. You can meet the candidates for Ward 1, 2, and 3. If you're not registered to vote, you can still do so by mail or online until October 27th. Afterward, you can register in person at the County Election Office in Colfax. Election Day is November 4th, 2025. And with Everyone Reads, meet Travis Baldry, author of The Legends and Lattes, during Everyone Reads event on Tuesday, November 4th, at 7:00 p.m. at Neil Public Library. Visit everybodyreads.org for discussion questions. And to see a listing of other community events, visit the city's tourism page, or visit or go to visit.pullman.com/events. With that, our next item up is non-agenda-related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action on the agenda. Final action includes confirmation of appointments, consent agenda, and regular agenda items. This agenda item for comments will not exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments should be directed to the mayor or the city councils of body. No comment should be directed to an individual council member, and for RCW, doesn't allow for community comments to be used to support a political campaign. Is there anyone who would like to provide a non-agenda-related community comment? If so, please come forward, and we'll have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Carloy, and I am with the Pullman Civic Trust, and I am here to invite all of you and anybody in the community who likes to carve pumpkins for Halloween. Pullman Civic Trust is sponsoring the Second Annual Pumpkin Wall, and this year it's going to be assembled on Pine Street Plaza. And the way you can participate is simply carve a pumpkin, bring it down to Pine Plaza, and put it on the wall on October 23rd, which is a Thursday, I believe. And then, we will come and string lights through it to illuminate the pumpkins, and then we will have the pumpkins on display through November 1st. So I brought you little flyers, so let everybody know, and I hope that you all want to participate and carve a pumpkin and get in the spirit of Halloween.
Can you just drop those off with Dee? Thank you. Anyone else like to provide non-agenda item-related community comments? Yes, Bobby.
I'm gonna start right in. The BNO Tax Credit Program wrapped up faster than ever this year, closing just four hours after opening. In that short time, 800,000 credits, about $1 million total, were distributed among Main Street communities that applied right away. This incredible response shows how much businesses value the program as a meaningful way to keep BNO tax dollars local and support economic growth in Pullman. If your business wasn't able to pledge this year, don't worry, Downtown Pullman Association will reach out in January 2026 with information on how to participate in the next round. At last week's Places on Main, the Main Street Annual Conference, the Downtown Pullman Association was honored with a 2025 Excellence on Main Award. This was for Places for People. This award recognizes DPA's movable furniture program, the colorful tables, chairs, and umbrellas found in Pine Street and High Street Plazas. And these are a place to help create welcoming public spaces for everyone to enjoy. Special recognition also goes to DPA Promotions Committee Chair Chelsea Whitney, who was named as one of a dozen outstanding Main Street volunteers across Washington State. Thank you, and congratulations, Chelsea. Halloween arrives early this year in downtown. The downtown trick-or-treat happens Thursday, October 24th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Dress up and join in the fun. Some businesses will host tables outside because, just to make room for everyone. It is also in conjunction with First Down Friday. Look for teal pumpkins. They mark allergy-friendly treats so that every child can enjoy Halloween safely. And then, finally, don't forget to carve your pumpkins for the pumpkin wall. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to provide non-agenda-related community comments? Seeing none, move on to City Councilmember comments, and I'll start with Councilmember Fagerin.
Two announcements or comments. First and foremost, I simply want to say thank you to every person who was involved in the incident with the apartment fire that we had on Larry Street. My goodness, what an event. And it's those moments that really make me proud to live in Pullman when we have all of those people coordinating together. So thank you, Fire, thank you, Police, thank you, City Communications, for keeping everybody in the loop, and thank goodness that everybody is safe. So thank you for everybody. And second, I just want to congratulate everybody who's running for office. I think ballots dropped this week, so it's been a long road, and good luck for the final weeks, and you represent the best in Pullman, so thank you for running.
Councilmember Parks.
No comment.
Councilmember Wright.
No comment.
Councilmember Guido.
No comment.
Councilmember Weller.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I have something that one of the teams who worked with the fire department sent me, and since I didn't ask them if I could share their name, but they did want me to pass along the information, I'd like to do that. So as Councilmember Fagerin already said, everybody who worked on that did a phenomenal job. But this one was directed at our fire department in particular. I would like to take the opportunity to recognize the great job the Pullman Fire Department did on the Larry Street fire. Your department was aggressive and efficient. Our crews all had positive feedback and commented the chief ran a well-organized scene. I look forward to continuing to work with PFD and building a stronger relationship. Great job to the men and women of PFD. Thank you. So I wanted to make sure that you all knew that it's not only coming from me, but from other people who have worked with you, who understand what you all go through. So thank you so much. Great job. As has already been said, keep up the great job and good work. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Delara.
No comment.
Next item up is City Council Future Agenda Item Requests. Is there any council member that have any future agenda item requests? Seeing none, I'll move on to community comments on final action items. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials on any agenda item that the city council will take final action item at the meeting. Excludes items with public comments previously accepted. This exclusion extends to prior public hearings. Final agenda items include confirmation appointments, consent agenda, and regular agenda items. This agenda item for comments does not exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments should be directed to the mayor or the city councils of body. No comment should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who would like to provide comments on final action items? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, and with that, Ryan Schornhars, our interim fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. I have an awesome opportunity tonight to recognize one of our members, and Captain Johnson, if you could come up and join me. Captain Johnson recently completed a course at the National Fire Academy that I believe deserves some recognition, so I have a small statement to read, and then there are a couple items for presentation, and then I think is when we'll hold applause until the end, and we'll get through all that. Mark, here we go. Mark began his Executive Fire Officer, or EFO, journey back in 2016 when he entered the National Fire Academy's Managing Officer Program. That program is designed for mid-level fire service leaders. The program challenges participants to expand their leadership capacity and professional vision. Mark began his studies in 2017, and it was during this time that he learned about the EFO program. The EFO program is the flagship initiative of the U.S. Fire Administration administered through the National Fire Academy. It provides executive-level education for fire service leaders to prepare them for complex challenges of tomorrow. Members of the Pullman Fire Department who have previously completed this program include Chief Scott Lavier, Chief Mike Heston, and myself. In 2023, Mark was selected from among hundreds of applicants nationwide to enter this prestigious program. The EFO program is based at the National Fire Academy Campus in Emmitsburg, Maryland. It consists of four residency sessions and numerous online courses completed over two years. Historically, this program lasted for four years, but following COVID-19, it was restructured into an accelerated format. Some of Mark's peers entered that previous four-year program and were in the journey for over six years. The capstone requirement of the program is an applied research project. For this component, students were enrolled at Columbia Southern University and worked with faculty to complete their studies. Mark's paper, titled "An Examination of Alternative Mechanisms for Pullman Fire Department", explored long-term sustainability and alternative governance models for our organization. This past August, Mark successfully defended his research before a panel at the National Fire Academy and was awarded his graduation certificate by the U.S. Fire Administrator Chief Donna Black. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing Captain Mark Johnson for his outstanding accomplishment. He now joins an elite group of fire service leaders who have shaped and strengthened our profession. With his achievement, Mark not only elevated his own leadership, but also brought great credit to the Pullman Fire Department and the community we serve. And I have here Mark's certificate that the National Fire Academy delivered him on his graduation, and that is his at home or wherever he chooses to mount it. And if you want to set that down, Mark, I also have two other items. One is just a letter of commendation from the fire department for his achievements, and you can read that later. And the other is an award presentation from the department following our procedures and policies, and this is a commendation for a distinguished service medal. And we'd like to present that to Mark, for him to wear proudly upon his uniform. Oh, it just came off its little holder there, but it's a distinguished service for everything that he has done to not only further himself, the department, but to represent the city in an awesome fashion. So if you could join me in congratulating EFO Officer Captain Mark Johnson. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize our staff when they do such amazing work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Very, very well deserved. Thank you, Captain Johnson. Moving on, the next item is Consent Agenda, and feel free, those that need to go, please step out. The items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the City Council without separate discussion. I'd entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So move.
Second.
With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, that, if you could read the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a motion to dispense with reading the regular meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2025, and approve them as submitted. Item two is a motion to approve the transfer of sales tax revenue to CIP Reserve Fund for 2025 Q3 in the amount of $357,584. Item three, a motion to approve dispersments for electronic transfers numbered 459 through 489 totaling $770,560.68. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-32043 through 2011-32267 totaling $1,751,459.13. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for advanced travel checks numbered 1444 through 1459 totaling $3,641.09. Item six, a motion to ratify change order number two to the Citywide Safety Improvement Project Contract. Item seven, ordinance number 25-17, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, amending Pullman City Code Section 6.95.040 as it relates to exemptions to commercial business registration and other matters properly related thereto. And finally, item eight, Resolution Number R-41-25, a resolution approving the Title Six Plan for Pullman Transit.
With that, do any council members desire to have any items removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next up is public hearing, and we have Wayne Thompson, our transit manager. It's a public hearing for the Pullman Transit 2024 Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This public hearing is part of the process for an annual submittal we prepare for the State Department of Transportation. As one of the 32 public transit agencies in the state, this is a requirement to remain in compliance as a public transit provider and eligible for grant funding. The full plan is available online and should be part of your council package, so what I hope to do tonight is just touch on some highlights, and then any feedback I receive, I will incorporate into a final product and come back in early November with the final transit development plan. So as far as highlights, I always like to point out that we are a city-owned agency. We are governed by the city council, which is rare in the state of Washington. We're in rare ranks with Everett, Yakima, Ellensburg, and ourselves as city transit agencies, so it's got its benefits. It's definitely a unique organization. Our service area is the city limits of Pullman. Our staffing includes a small transit management team, including myself, an administrative supervisor, training and safety officer, and two operations supervisors, but the real work is done on the front lines, the four bus washers we have, the six dispatchers, and the 28 drivers. We provide both fixed route bus service and paratransit van service, and they're both levels of service are ADA compliant. Year-round, our core service is 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Those are five routes that run through the community. We operate on both Saturday and Sunday, and Sunday is a rare feature around the state, I've learned. During the WSU fall and spring semesters, what we would call Full Service or Community Plus, we run more buses, especially on campus, and we operate until midnight, Monday through Saturday. These hours, this report year, 2024, were supplemented by service to and from the airport for every single flight, so it's not uncommon, even during the summertime where you would think, I just said we end at 6:30, not uncommon to have a driver and a dispatcher in the office at 1:30 in the morning, and then reopen again at 3:00 a.m. So we do serve every flight. Fares haven't changed in several years. It's still $1 to ride a bus, $0.80 to ride a Dollar Ride van. The youth in Pullman have ridden fare-free since 2022, and WSU students and faculty are prepaid if they have a valid WSU Cougar Card through the contract we have with WSU. That contract I just mentioned historically has been an enhanced level of service contract, but with COVID and the changes in revenue structure, 2020, that contract became a universal transit access pass, or UTAP, contract. Basically, it's prepaid fares only, no investment in service levels. It's UTAP, it's a pass contract. Part of the report is on connectivity, and 2024, we did expand to the airport, but that's in city limits. A lot of people don't realize that. We finally expanded to that corner of our city, so that's great, but other connectivity that we make, Northwestern Trailways is in town for two trips daily to Moscow, two trips daily to Spokane, and also two trips from Spokane and from Moscow daily. Other connectivity that we have is Council on Aging or Coast. That is a Colfax-based organization, and we see their vans in town quite often. The connectivity I reference is the opportunity for their patrons and ours to transfer rides, primarily through the Dollar Ride system. I've twice now mentioned the airport service, and I include that in the 2024 highlights. Really, two things stand out for 2024. It's in May, we expanded to cover every flight to and from the airport, and also for 2024, it was our return to midnight service. We had dropped that with the COVID situation, and I think a lot of people, including some of our staff, thought we never really were going to get back to midnight service, so it is a good sign of recovery for us. 2024 is highlighted by airport service, startup in May and August, returning to midnight Other highlights that came before council, I'll just hit on a few topics. We got the approval for the last three electric buses to make that purchase. Dollar Ride and fixed route service has some extensive software that we rely on. We had a renewal that came before you. The airport service, I keep mentioning, increased staffing as a result of the airport service. We have the level of drivers we have, 28 full-time drivers in full service, two operations supervisors, that is tied to the airport expansion. Also, in 2024, we had a public forum to look at route changes and get ideas. Grant application was brought to you for the next two electric buses, which in 2025, we've received the award. We are due for two more electric buses, and you approved the WSU contract I've mentioned. On the capital front, it's highlighted mostly by vehicle purchases. We're in a cycle, the capital improvement program in particular, where we buy two buses at a time on a two-year cycle. The grant cycle with the state and the federal government is two years. And then the vans, we rely less on grants for the vans, but we still have a two-year replacement cycle we're trying to get well ingrained in. We've fallen behind, but that is our intention, that is our CIP cycle, is two buses every two years, a van every two years. And those rely heavily, especially the buses, on the 80% grant, 20% local. And also, a big for the capital look ahead is the 2023 Facility Master Plan, which recommends we are due for either an expansion or a new facility, and that'll be a theme. If not here, I have scratched it a few times because I say it too much, but we do need to expand or rebuild, but it's covered well in the transit development plan. Our financial forecast includes that $20 million facility, and because of that, at the end of the report, you'll see that if we followed that revenue stream and that project list on the calendar we have, we'd be $1.5 million in the red. We are not going to do that. We'll either look seriously at different or new revenue streams, or we'll adjust that project calendar. We will bump it back if needed, but we are not going to move forward expecting to go in the red. That's just a formality of the way the report is done with the schedule we have and the revenue we have. In 2030, a few years away, we would be in the red. Our look into the future as a development plan will have us continuing to be ADA compliant for both bus service and van service, will continue to be an active participant in our regional transit, RTPO, the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, based here in Pullman. We will try to look at service level changes through the eyes of the user. That's not just being transparent, but trying to take on that perspective. We've also established for several years now a program which we hope to keep in place, working with our engineering division of Public Works to look at development that they know is coming, and also at construction, so we can plan ahead for maybe long-term detours or the potential for service changes. We've got our eye on different corners of the town, development that once point A and B connect, the bus will go there, but that's really helped us by keeping that connection with our engineering staff. Also, we want to continue to preserve our facilities and equipment with that CIP program. That's a schedule that we come to this room manually and get approval for, and it's very important for us. And finally, on capital, we want to continue to look at the clean fuel equipment options. Right now, that's electric buses, but there are other options, may see propane vans in the future. Hydrogen's been mentioned, but clean fuel is the direction that we are going. Our goals, just a short list of the goals I've highlighted here, proceed with that capital investment cycle, include public engagement in our service changes, continue to grow our airport service, and also increase our employee retention. That's a new one we added this year, trying to encourage people to stay, so that's a formal goal we've stated. Our capital improvement program does rely on that 80-20% match, so it's very important for us to continue to keep our cash reserves able to fund 20% of any large capital purchase. That's typically buses or this facility I've mentioned several times. The report ends with a summary of statistics, mostly our miles, our hours, our rides, but also these financials I've mentioned. We're well aware that with the transit facility design that's been recommended and the revenue forecast that's in place, we either need to push back the schedule of that facility or look at new revenue streams. So with any feedback I get tonight on the plan, I will come back to you in early November, try to incorporate that plan. And what I've done in the past is, the feedback I get tonight, I'll actually include as highlighted so that people can see the value of bringing feedback to the public hearing. So with that, I'm open to any feedback you can offer.
So with that, since this is a public hearing, first of all, I'll open it up for the public to provide any comments on this. to provide any comments of, on this. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak as a part of this public hearing? Is there anyone that'd like to speak as a part of the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll go and close that and then open up for council. Are there any comments or questions that the council has? Councilmember Delara?
So, like I said to you over email, I had a great time reading through the TDP, and I really appreciate all the work that has been done for this plan. And I, as I've also mentioned before, I especially appreciate the strategy points that include regional trans, regional connectivity. There's a lot of community hope for public transit connections to Moscow and other parts in the Palouse. Would you, would it be possible to share how Pullman Transit could play a role in supporting those regional connectivity goals?
Sure. Our participation with the Palouse RTPO, the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, is probably our, our key local involvement in, in what regional connectivity goes on. Our recent stretch to the airport, I would say, is in the connectivity realm. We were aware of and supported the plans that Coast had to go from Colfax to Pullman to Moscow. That didn't happen. Before I would ever come to you and ask for Pullman Transit to expand, I would like to do a few things internally, such as our, our core service, it's now 35 minutes, get it back to 30 minutes, cover some of those pending point A to point B, when Greyhound Way and Terreview connect, we want to serve that area, northwest part of town. Then I would come to you, and, and it would be a major change. It would be, City of Pullman service area is no longer City of Pullman boundaries. So that's, that's where I am with the topic now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Wayne, this is really good. I would also like to echo, so I know since about 2009, maybe 2010, when the WSU U of I route sunsetted, it's always been my goal, and I'm glad Councilmember Delara has picked it up so well, much better than myself, on regional transportation. And I know at this point, it may not be totally feasible, but as we heard at chamber this morning, the importance of regional economic development, that, that's continuing to be a drum that I beat, and I know that a lot of other people are as well. I will say also, the, I, I heard two students talking, and it was really, it was kind of interesting. I wasn't in my city council role, and they were behind me, I think I was at dinner, and they were talking about how amazing, I think they had come from the West Side, how amazing that your department was. The only thing they said is that you have to remember, they were talking to a third person that had just come in. They don't go past a certain time, and you have to be aware of that. And so I just wanted to pass that along. And the last thing is, because I always have to check up on this, the Community Action Center Route, that route that goes right by, and I'm not saying just Community Action Center Route, but I know I fought hard to keep that for many, many years when that was, you know, first put in, and then it was kind of taken out because there aren't enough riders, people were saying, but it's so essential. I just want to make sure and ask, and so that people do understand, that route is still going, correct?
That is. I just drove by that tonight, and I was admiring the flashing beacon, the sidewalk that the city put in. That is a critical part of the, the loop routes approach to Walmart and that turn on Harvest.
I am, yeah, I am so glad that you continue to put that at the top. I, I really appreciate that. I think the only thing, the only other thing, and I've, I've talked to the mayor about this, is continuing to work on our shelters for our bus stops. And I know that's in your, your plan as well, but continuing to do that is very, very important. But you always do an amazing job. I appreciate your work, Wayne, and I will be quiet.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Wayne, for always giving us a complete report. And most of all, I appreciate your careful planning. Since I've been on council, you always are thinking forward, but in a careful way. So thank you for everything that you and your, everyone has done to keep improving our, our bus service and keep it serving our residents the best way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? If not, thank you very much, Wayne.
Thank you.
All right. Next up for public hearings is the 2026 City Revenue Sources. And with that, Jeff Albrecht, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
Good evening, council. We do do a biennial budget, so this is obviously not a budget year, but one thing that is done every year is setting the tax levy. And part of the process for setting the tax levy is then to do a review in a public hearing regarding revenue. So what I'll, I'll probably talk a little bit about expenses, but for the most part, I'll talk about revenue, kind of where we are, where projections are, and then how that potentially would, would lead into tax levy setting for 2026. So this is our general fund revenue, which is basically where our tax revenues go, other than, than the bond that was used to construct those facilities. So you can see here our general fund revenues. You can see 23, 24 actual, where we budgeted for 25, estimated through kind of the first eight months of the year, and then where the 2026 budget currently sits. So you can see the general fund revenues, and, and we've talked about this in other settings, have been very flat. So we've been right around that 29 million. We budgeted about 29.6, probably right now looking to come in about $400,000 to $500,000 less than that for what we budgeted for this year. And next year's budget's kind of in line with that production. So what's that made up of? Property tax. So you can see the property taxes over the years. Again, we go, we're limited by that 1% increase to existing property plus new construction. So that 1% has been consistently done over the years, and then new construction can add potentially another 1% to 2%, depending on how much new construction is, although we're definitely starting to see a slowing construction over the past year. EMS levy, which is again, is, is our other tax levy dedicated specifically for emergency management services. That is also limited by 1%. We did budget more last year. At one point, we thought we had a little bit of excess capacity in that bond. As we worked through that with the county auditor, we realized that capacity was less than we initially thought. So you see that number is going to come in under budget there, and that is because of that, that 1% cap. And in 2026, we'll likely come into that too. Sales tax revenue, we had had strong sales tax growth for a couple of years, kind of peaked out in 2023, actually dipped a little bit in 2024, is dipping a little bit in 2025. It's coming in slightly ahead of budget, but, but less than last year. So it took about a 2% cut or reduction from 23 to 24, and it's probably going to end up being around a 1% this year. Our hope is that we'll start to see that tick back up again next year. Utility tax has been a fairly steady but minor increase, where that's gone up on, on taxes that we bring in on utilities, primarily water, sewer, Avista, and garbage utilities. Admissions tax, which again is generated through admissions, primarily WC events, that has definitely tailed off, and looks like it's probably going to be below budget. We, we kind of, other than the COVID years, have been running around six to sometimes as much as $700,000 a year, definitely tailed off in 2024, partially impacted a little bit by the closure of the movie theater, but also just general across the board and, and others. And that's probably going to come in about $100,000 below budget, and that seems to be kind of where it's settled at, uh, in, based off of the 24 final numbers. Liquor and marijuana tax has been very consistent. Unfortunately, hasn't been increasing, but has been pretty consistent with that 550-ish range. It'll probably come in there. And then we saw, we've seen a serious drop off in building permits this year, and that's the effects, number of things, it affects permit revenue. A lot of times those building permits obviously turn into construction, which then, if there's less permits, there's likely going to be less construction in the future, which impacts both sales tax and property taxes. So what you're seeing here is we've got a couple revenue sources in property tax and utility taxes that are increasing very slightly. We've got sales tax and liquor marijuana and taxes that are staying pretty flat. We've got building permits and utility taxes are declining, so that's where you kind of see this very, overall, very flat or slightly declining in our revenues. Just a few other revenues from different funds, just for relevance. Civic Improvement, also known as a lodging tax, saw a great growth there. It kind of peaked out in 2024. We are ahead of budget in 2025, but it is looking like it's going to decline a little bit, probably from previous years. Firefighter Pension Fund is some funds we get from the state with fire insurance tax. It does help support our firefighter pension, although it does not fully fund it. We do have the 2018 bond, so again, that was a bond passed. There was two pieces. There's a Parks and Rec piece. That was a tenure bond, and then there was the construction primarily of, of City Hall that was involved with that, along with a few other projects. That is obviously a set amount, so that, that levy stays the same regardless of, of property taxes or changes in property valuation. And then we do have Cemetery Expansion Fund, which is some revenue we generate based off of sales of cemetery services and investment in, in those funds. So looking at 2026 general funds, so where's kind of the revenue made up to fund the 2026 revenues? About 60, 76% of it is some type of tax, whether that be the utility tax, property taxes, sales tax, those types of things. Next biggest is charges for goods and services. This is our Parks and Recs registrations, those types of things. Then we have some in-governmental revenues. Those are a lot of the pass-throughs of the things like the marijuana tax and that. That gets passed back to us, a portion gets passed back to us from the state. Licenses and permits, miscellaneous revenue, and then some transfers in from other funds. It is worth noting that our general fund for 2026, our revenue budget right now is 29 million. Our expenses budget for 2026 is 31 and a half million. That is prior to CIP, which was not in the original 2026 budget, because it was just approved this last year, as well as any potential amendments that might happen for 2026. So this will be the third straight year where we've, we budgeted, well, actually, fourth straight year we budgeted deficit. 2023, we actually outperformed that budget and, and did okay, but 2024 saw expenditures exceed revenues. 2025 is well on pace for that, and 2026 is budgeted for that. So we are seeing cash declines in our funds, and we've talked a little bit about that in the past, and we'll probably certainly have some future conversations about that, of how we continue to address that. But currently, we're on a kind of unsustainable path of expenses exceeding revenues. Here's just a little bit longer history of sales tax. You saw 2019, 2020, and one thing I'll keep in mind is this is when we receive the revenue. So there's always a two-month lag. So for example, if you look at 2024, it actually, what happens in the city includes the last two months of '23 and 10 months of '24, because by the time the business collects it, then they submit it to the state, and the state submits it to us. It's about a two-month lag. So I just want to make sure people understand that. But we saw 2019 growth into 2020, obviously saw a little bit of dip during COVID, which was, was not unique. Saw really great growth from '21 to '22 and '22 to '23, we were seeing 10-plus percent growth in sales tax revenues. And now we've seen this very much level off in '24 and '25. And again, sales tax after property tax is our second biggest source of revenue. Property taxes, I just put this up kind of as an information. This is where, if you live within the City of Pullman, this is kind of where your property taxes go. So the city receives about 27% of those taxes, and this includes the regular levy, the EMS levy, which I mentioned, the bond, which goes in, and then this does include parks. Metro Parks is technically a separate entity, but really those funds are used for city services, so I included it here for that purpose. So about 27% of the taxes go to the city, a little over 10% go to the county. Almost 24% go back to the state of Washington. Pullman Regional Hospital gets about 6.5%. The Pullman School District gets a little over 30%, and then the Port of Whitman gets a little under 2%. So that's kind of where the tax dollars go, at least as far as 2025. And the, the valuation is about 12.2, 3% per thousand dollars, which that is, that has actually gone down while, while property tax as a whole has gone up. The cost, the assessment per thousand actually has gone down a fair amount in the last couple of years. So just a little bit of data as we, we lead into potentially next meeting of, of doing tax levy setting. So there you can see the levies that were set for 2025. So just under 8 million on the city regular, a little under 1.1 million on the EMS, and the bond, again, that number's set. That stays consistent year to year. And you notice those vary just slightly from what's projected to be brought in. There's always a few people that don't pay their property taxes. Eventually, that's something we'll collect down the road, either when they sell the property or, or potentially the county could even do a lien on it. The state has, by state statute, property taxes can go up on existing property by the less of 1% or what they call the IPD. It's basically an inflation rate. That inflation rate number just came out a couple of weeks ago, and it's 2.44%, so the lesser of the amounts is 1%. So that would be the most that existing property taxes can be raised. So what I have on here is obviously 1% of the regular would generate about $80,000. 1% of the EMS would generate about $11,000. The, the bond can't change. That one's preset. So then you can see what the existing property taxes would generate total. We do then get new construction. When I reached out to the county, they had done assessment on new construction at their level. There's also a state component to that. Right now, that preliminary new construction is about $8 million. That'll probably go up. Usually when they put the state number in there, it, it does go up, but I do suspect it's going to be less than it has been in recent years. So I feel really confident we'll generate about $22,000 in new construction. It'll probably end up being more than that, but less than what we've seen. So I wouldn't be surprised if new construction was closer to that 1% or less. So if you did a 1% increase in existing and, and another maybe say 1%, you'd probably be looking at a total of 2%. So what this would do is a 1% increase on the, for existing property owners without any increase in the bond would be about a nine tenths of a percent increase for existing property owners. And that's not universal. That's collectively as a city as a whole. So I'll certainly answer any questions, but the next steps would be to have the public hearing for revenue sources, and then based off of comments from council, as well as the public hearing, then we look to bring forward at next meeting, a, a motion to set the property taxes for 2026. So just to give a little bit of the timeline, that meeting is November 4th. The county asked that we file with them by November 15th, and we're required by state statute to wrap up the whole process by November 30th. So that gives the county a couple of weeks to, to do their piece in that prop, levy setting. So that's what I have.
With that, since this is a public hearing, first I'll open it up for public comments. So is there any public comments on our 2026 city revenue sources? Is there any, anyone who'd like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I'll stop that. I'm going to open it up to questions. And prior to that, there's two slides. Jeff, I'd like to just have you emphasize, if you go to the city, the general fund revenue, and this is just for the council to look at this, so I think it's two more up, that one there. If you look, we're definitely, our revenues that are projected in 2025 versus the budget, you'll notice that is significantly lower. And so we definitely have a decrease in the revenue that we projected as related to the budget. So that's something that is going to need to be adjusted. And then if you go down two slides, I guess one more, and, oh, no, that's the right one, sorry. Down at that bottom where you see the 2026 revenues versus expenses, you see we're about 2.5 million underwater there. So those are adjustments that we're going to need to make in the budget for or between for this year and next year, because when we set the budget, it was, we did not have any allowances. Would that be accurate to say, Jeff?
Yeah, you know, I think we set the budget, we were, we were hoping to see some revenue growth. That hasn't happened, and, and expenses obviously have continued to increase, so.
And, and that's prior to the CIP piece, so that, then any CIP work actually adds, adds to that deficit that we're running. So for the CIP that was proposed, so that's something that we'll be coming back and communicate as we, as we work out. We're providing this budget hearing, but so you understand. We're providing this budget hearing, but so you understand. So with that, I'm going to open up any questions related for this revenue hearing. Seeing none, then I'll close the revenue hearing then. Do you have more comment?
More of my comment, and I might be speaking other council members' minds. Jeff, thank you always for your reports, but you've been painting a less-than-rosy picture every time that you're up here. And so we have some hard decisions to make, and I know that, I'm sure some of us have already had those conversations with the mayor. I'm personally looking forward to our next budget cycle. I would like us to get to a place where revenue does match expenses at some point, whether it's next budget cycle or soon after that. So people listening, this is going to be a few hard decisions around the budget that this council is going to decide on in the coming months and next year.
With that, thank you. So I'll go ahead and close that public hearing. At this time, I'm going to recess city council, and we're going to, I'm going to open the Metropolitan Parks District meeting. And with that, these tiles are lit. If you can call roll, please.
Yes, I can. President Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Delira.
Here.
Commissioner Fagerin.
Here.
Commissioner Guido. Commissioner Parks.
Here.
Commissioner Weller.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
With that, the first item we have for the Metropolitan District is a motion dispensed with the reading of the November 12th, 2024, special meeting minutes and approve them as submitted. I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
And with that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is a motion to dispense the reading of the November 19th, special meeting minutes and approve them as submitted. I'd entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And then the third is motion to approve dispersment of accounts payable checks numbered 201129323, totaling $38,851. I'd entertain that motion.
So moved. Second.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And now we're on to the public hearing for the Metropolitan Parks 2026 revenue sources. And once again, Jeff?
Sure. So basically, a very parallel timeline to the city that's done for the metro parks. It is a separate entity, does have a separate taxing ability, but really plays by kind of the same rules as the city for the most part. Metro Parks really exists for the purpose to benefit parks in the city. So they're very interrelated, but technically two separate entities and two separate processes. So here's, you can see the history of Metro Parks. The Metro Parks basically has two revenue sources. It's property taxes and donations. And we don't ever budget for donations because we never know for sure if they're going to come in. So really, when we put together the budget, the revenue is the property taxes. You can see in 23 and 24, we had some donations there, anywhere around $50,000 to $100,000. Majority of that was related to donations for Veterans Park. If you see 2025, it's significant revenue. And if you remember right, we've had a million dollars of donations for the Lawson Garden, Memory Garden, in addition to Veterans Park and a few other things. So it's been very nice to see that revenue come in, and those will be some major projects. But obviously, that money is dedicated specifically for that source, so it can't be used for other sources. So right now, we had budgeted about $682,000 for property tax for 2025. We're going to come in a little bit better than that, $693. The preliminary budget for 2026 was just low under $700,000. So there is a little bit of uniqueness to Metro Parks here as it opposed to the other ones. And I have the other ones up there kind of as reference for interrelations. But Metro Parks is restricted by the same 1%. But what happened is back in, I believe it was 2014, as a junior taxing district, there's a certain amount of tax that the city as a whole cannot exceed. And there was some other entities in Pullman that did some taxing in 2014, which bumped down the maximum amount that could be done. And basically, Metro Parks was kind of lowest on the totem pole, so they lost some of their taxing ability. What happened, though, is the maximum allowable continued to increase by that 1% a year, even though we couldn't fully tax it. So we had that excess capacity that was been available or had the potential to be available if the total taxing amount fell below. That's actually happened within the past few years. So we actually have the ability to increase this by over 1%, but still be less than that maximum taxable allowance. It can actually go a fair amount. To put it in perspective, the tax amount that was levered for 2025 was actually, I believe, less than the tax amount levered in 2014 because it actually took that bound, and it's slowly grown back up to that level. So what I've shown here for conversation is actually a 10% increase just to the metro tax, which would generate about $70,000, as you can see there, plus the new construction. 10% does seem fairly significant, but you can see 10% of Metro Parks is still less than 1% on the city because it's obviously a much lower tax rate. So what this 10% would do is it would generate $70,000. That $70,000 does have to be dedicated to either parks capital projects or parks operations. So it would be used solely for the purpose of parks, but would help offset some of those costs associated with either future capital or operational projects. In 2025, we did for the first time shift some Metro Parks money to operations. It had been used, not always historically, but for quite a few years have been used solely for capital projects. And because of some of the tightness in revenues, we dedicated some of it toward operations. So if you did do all this, and again, the Metro Parks is a separate tax, but if you did do all this, the total increase in existing property tax would still be less than 1.5%. So you'd have about the, you know, we talked about the nine-tenths of a percent of the city. Even with the 10% in metro, the total increase would still be less than 1.5% for existing properties. So again, same process here. We're required to hold a public hearing on revenue sources. And then based off of the public hearing and any comments from council, we would bring back levy motions at the next meeting to then meet that filing November 15th with the county and November 30th with the state.
So this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open that up. Is there any, anyone who'd like to provide community comments related to the Metropolitan Parks 2026 revenue sources? Is there anyone who would like to provide comments? Seeing none, I'll go and close the public hearing. And with that, to the council, any questions, discussion related to that? Councilmember Weller.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. I think we've got to be careful because I know, I mean, we're looking at the projections, and you know, as Councilmember Fagerin aptly said, it's continuing to get less and less sunny. However, I also know we have very expensive housing already, property housing, you know, housing right now. And it's difficult because adding additional tax, even though it seems fairly minimal. So I have two minds about it. I don't like the idea of doing it. But if there is a need to the overall city, then I'm still kind of processing. So I'm speaking out loud, but you know, just that's it for me right now.
Okay. Anyone else would like to? Councilmember Fagerin?
More, thank you, more comment, but we've been talking property taxes, and I think that we are well aware that there's been some dissatisfaction with how the county assessor has approached assessing property tax values. Just want to let the community and folks know if they have an issue with their assessed value. They can contact the assessor's office and file a petition to have it reevaluated. So just wanted to make that comment.
I'm not seeing any further discussion, so. So we'll end that. So with that, I will go ahead. Sorry, Metro Parks meeting, and I'll reopen the city council meeting. And we're on to the regular agenda items. The first item is a motion to approve the police support services labor agreement. With that, once again, Jeff?
Yeah, so what's before you is a combination of about a year-long effort in negotiating a contract with the Police Officers Guild for the police support services. So that contract actually expired December 31st, so we've been kind of operating under the existing standards until then. But at the September 16th meeting, the unit ratified by a member vote, a new agreement. Basically, the heights would include a 3.75% range for this current year, and that would be retro. So they would get that back to January 1. And then as we've kind of started to do with a lot of our contracts, we kind of built a floor and a ceiling in that's really based off of COLA. So it'd be a two and a half to four and a half floor and ceiling for 2025 and 2026. And actually, we have the 2025 number now. It's 2.8%. So that would fall in there. And then one other additional thing that had a financial is expansion of work for code enforcement officers. So we have some code enforcement officers that have taken on some additional responsibilities with snow removal and trash and bikes and graffiti and those types of things. So those individuals, in addition to the increases they would get, basically their base salary would go up by an additional 2%. So that's kind of the highlights. The whole agreement is obviously in there. Certainly want to thank the Guild and all the work that they put in and having discussions over the past year with us on this.
So with that, any questions? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? Any, without that, if you, it's a motion to approve police support services labor agreement for years 2025 through 2027. Sorry, it was short, so I went ahead. With that, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Next, Jeff up here with the next one also.
So then related to this is, this obviously does increase. Typically, what we do is we don't budget unknown contracts, so we hadn't budgeted in for any increased expenses. So what you see in front of you is ordinance number 2518, which would be an ordinance to amend the 2025, 2026 budget to the tune of about $129,000. About 45, a little over 45,000 of that would be related to 2025, and a little over 83,000 of that would be related to 2026. So this would just amend the budget to that, basically is reflective of those increases in the contract.
With that, any questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve. Oops. Second.
That, if you could read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 25-18 and ordinance amending ordinance number 24-14, adopted November 14, 2024, and entitled an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Pullman for the biennium 2025 through 2026, relating to the 2025 through 2027 Pullman Police Officers Guild Support Services Agreement.
With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance passes. Next ordinance up, Jeff?
Yeah, so I think it was two meetings ago, we had a discussion item regarding our CIP designation in our general fund and how the designation and restriction on our money was going at a much higher rate than the general revenues. And really, it was putting us in a position where almost all of our cash was restricted, which, one, we were probably on pace to end the year where we had no unrestricted cash, to be honest with you, and we're probably setting ourselves up for 2026 to actually have a problem. So we talked a little bit about that ordinance last time and appreciate council's feedback, and I kind of came back with some thoughts and proposals. So just a little reminder, the current ordinance was ordinance 1023. It was adopted in November 2010, so it is 15 years old or almost 15 years old. But basically, what it did is earmarked a portion of sales tax from new business to be designated for general fund capital needs. Philosophically, a great idea, and honestly, I think was a very good formula for the time. It had just kind of outlived its time. But at that time, it was 50% of the sales tax revenues, less construction-derived sales tax. So when we get our sales tax reports on a monthly basis, it has categories for this. You know, it's everything from retail to automotive, and there's actually three different classes that are construction. And I believe the philosophy at the time was as construction grows, that usually means city growth. And a lot of times, then those revenues are needed for additional services, whether it's additional fire or police or recreation or library, whatever the case may be. And then it kind of set a baseline of $594,000 per quarter. So the first $594 was dedicated to operations, then you take off the construction, and then after that, 50% went to CIP. Again, formula worked very well for a very long time for the city. So what I really did is, based off some feedback in our discussion, kept a very similar methodology. And basically, instead of doing the current base level that's dedicated to operations of $594, set it at 970 per quarter. So basically, an additional, not quite $400,000 per quarter went to the operations piece. And I'll talk a little bit about on the next slide kind of how I came to those numbers. But I think it takes advantage of a good methodology, a good philosophy, but kind of resets that starting point, which puts us on a little bit better track. So what I did, and these are just really loose projections. What I did is I took where we're at today, so where we're at in our estimated sales tax for 2025, and I said if we did 0%, 2.5%, 5% growth over the next five years, kind of what it might generated. The construction number can vary quite a bit. What I did is I just took a historical average, I think of the last five years of about how much construction was. It can vary. And so, for example, if our sales tax stayed the same as it is this year with no growth, that would generate a little less than $700,000 a year to CIP. That is theoretically less than what we're looking to do for CIP next year. What I really tried to do is base off the 2.5% growth that's kind of used this year. 2026, and we'll have to talk, I think, in the future if we can truly do all these CIP projects. But the plan for 2026 was to do about just under $760,000 of CIP projects. So what I kind of said is if we get some growth, use that as the starting point. And then if, you know, it'll grow if the sales tax grows, and obviously, if it doesn't, it would stay the same. So the hope is that we'd at least be in that 2.5% growth mode. And then, of course, if we did have more growth, then it probably does make sense to increase that investment into capital. Again, these are all very hypothetical, very projected numbers, where sales tax will come in and how much construction is certainly variable. But I just kind of wanted to give the council idea of how this could potentially play out and what that would mean. And to be honest, if we have a little sales tax growth, we're probably very limited in what we can do with CIP projects. Hopefully, if we're that 2.5% to 5%, we're back into the place where we can do at least most of those projects, so. So a few things in closing. Again, the formula hasn't been adjusted since inception. CIP deposits are growing significantly higher rate. We talked about that a couple of meetings ago, and it really was to the point where we're restricting all of our cash. The recent operational deficits are really causing us to reevaluate where we are. We've seen our cash balances decline significantly over the last two years, and it really has taken away, you know, any cushion that we have. If you do remember, last time, I did talk a little bit about the council does have the ability to remove designation cash. The CIP designation is done by this group, so you have the ability to remove that. That will likely still be needed. Right now, the CIP designation is about $4 million. We've obviously got some expenditures coming in, and we'll have a little bit more to deposit. I don't know if we'll end the year $4 million cash, to be honest with you. So it's quite likely that I'll be coming back in late November, early December and asking you to remove some of that designation. It won't affect future contributions to it, that'll be done by this tonight. But as far as the designation of that money, and like, I think, as we kind of alluded to earlier, we may have to hold off on some of our CIP projects next year anyway, potentially, so. we may have to hold off on some of our CIP projects next year anyway, potentially, so. So again, basically, it's just setting, pretty much keeping the same philosophy, same methodology, just resetting that baseline at $970,000 per quarter. So with that, I would answer. Any questions?
So any questions, Jeff? Councilmember Fagerin?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. Fifteen, this, first off, I will be voting yes on this. This just makes sense. And then, 15 years is a long time for this to be reviewed. Does council need to set a timeline that this will be reviewed on a more better basis than 15 years? Over five years, two years?
You know, that's a good question, and to be honest, it kind of just depends what tax revenues do. You know, if tax revenue starts to grow steadily, it could probably go a long time before it needs to get reviewed. If tax revenues grow really significantly or stay flat or decline, it probably will need to be reviewed a little sooner. So I don't know if it's, I don't know if there's a, it's hard to put a time date on that, but it's definitely something that probably should at least be discussed or brought up on a somewhat regular basis.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a question. When, when looking through this, what is our average project, CIP project, per year?
Yeah, it's varied a little bit in not counting COVID, because I think we did none or next to none in COVID. And even 2021, we did very little. If you take out those two years, I think we've averaged, we're usually in that 750 to 900,000. I think our peak year was about 1.1 million. But we usually, this year is a little, 2026 is a little bit lower, but we're kind of in that 750 to million range is probably about the norm.
Great, thanks.
Other questions, Jeff? If not, I'd entertain a motion to, for the ordinance.
Move to adopt ordinance 25-19. Thank you. Second.
That, if you could read the ordinance, please.
Yes, thank you. Ordinance number 25-19 and ordinance amending ordinance number 10-23, adopted November 9, 2010, and entitled "An Ordinance Designating the Fund to Receive a Percentage of Retail Sales Tax Revenue to Be Used for Capital Improvement Purposes, Establishing That Percentage and Other Matters Properly Related Thereto."
With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jeff. That passes. The next item before us is a motion to have staff review positions of, portions of the short-term rental code. And with this, this is something that Eric Fagerin and a couple of the council members have put this together, and I'll turn it to Eric for you to be able to talk about the specific sections that you're recommending to be sent to staff.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't have too much to add, other than what's in the packet. For the past month, we have heard from our constituents are concerned about this particular issue of the zoning code, STRs, even though it was fully passed last month. We've heard enough that me and fellow council members believe it deserves a second look. What I did is I basically went through all of the communications from our constituents that I've received and prioritized the sections of PCC 17109 and 1710. Basically matched the constituent comments with those areas of code that we should be taking another look at. Originally, I had in the motion to direct the planning committee as well as staff, but staff let me know that since the planning committee is already part of the process, that that language is redundant. But I will be making this motion with the full expectation that the planning committee will be reviewing this code as well. So with that being said, I can help answer any questions, or does any of my fellow council members who helped look at this want to contribute or say anything? I'm willing to, now is their time to do that as well.
And I would just say as clarification, not all of these items would go to the planning commission. Some of these items are not handled by the planning commission, but that's why it's going to the staff for that. With that, councilmember Delara?
Yeah, I guess I have one question. So I noticed that it says to move to console 2026. Just want to know what the purpose of moving the conversation to next year is.
That was, sorry, that was, thank you for that question. That was simply to give time for staff and then planning committee to review this. And so this motion has, gives them to the end of quarter one, which I believe is the end of March 2026.
Councilmember Guido?
So just clarification, Mayor, when you said that this is going to staff and not to the commission, the planning commission. Is that right?
Some of these items are not, don't go in front of the plan. The planning commission is not the one that did some of these items. So, for example, is the enforcement policy. That wouldn't be something that, that's administrative function. That's not something that goes to the planning commission, so using that as an example. But it goes to staff, and then staff will take to the planning commission the things that are appropriate to go to the planning commission. Questions? I guess what I'd like to do is, I'm not seeing any other questions. So with that, I'd open for a motion, and the motion, as stated in the packet, that, would that be appropriate, or do we need to read through everything?
Probably want to read the whole thing, just so it's clear.
Okay, so if I can get a motion, then I'm gonna let that, I'm gonna let you read it. So is there someone who would like to make a motion for what's in the packet and then have Thad read through to make sure it's clear?
So I move to propose the motion to review portions of the short-term rental code, PCC 17.109, and return to council in 2026.
And 17, and 0, and 10?
Yes.
Sorry.
Second.
There's a second. With that, Thad, if you could read the motion with the specific sections.
Yes. A motion to direct staff to conduct reviews of Pullman City Code, Chapter 17.109 and Chapter 17.10, as identified in the agenda memo, to recommend any proposed changes to the codes, to include justification for any portion of the codes, proposed or existing, that deviate from Washington state requirements, and report back to city council for discussion by the end of March 2026.
With that, any discussion? Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, so I recognize that short-term rentals are an important part of Pullman's housing and tourism landscape, and I believe it is our responsibility to keep them safe for our visitors. While I am open to compromises and changes, such as allowing photo submissions for compliance instead of requiring in-person inspections and adding more explicit language around complaint-driven enforcement, I cannot support any potential removal of safety measures that ensure guests are prepared in the event of emergency and are staying in Pullman under good living conditions. I understand that the next council, which I will not be a part of, may have different views, but I believe that safety measures for STRs are very important, and I just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstain? Okay, with that, it passes. And next up is, at this time, the city council will adjourn for executive session pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation, to which the agency, the governing body, or member acting in official capacity is a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. The executive session is expected to last 10 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce anticipated time needed by the city council. The council does not anticipate taking action following the executive session. It's currently nine, roughly 9:50, I mean, sorry, 6:50, thank you. It's not 9:50. It's a late night already. So we will start at 6:52.